Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock. It's time to call to order this meeting of the Gallatin City Council for May 7th, 2019. We'll begin this meeting like we do every meeting with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. This evening, Councilwoman Alexander is going to lead us in our prayer, and Councilwoman Hayes will lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
In our heart, pray. Return to your worship, God, once again, we come to say thank you for this beautiful day that God has created. We thank you for this sitting, what it stands for, and I pray, oh, God, that everything we say and everything we do in this meeting tonight will be praised in your sight, in the mighty and precious name of Jesus we do pray, and in our hearts say, amen.
Please do you want me to pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Camp.
President.
Mr. Alexander.
President.
Mr. Phan.
President.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
President.
Ms. Love.
Here.
And Mr. Overton.
President.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you so much. We have approval of minutes next, but there are none provided, so I would with this council's permission, before we go into public recognition on the gender-related items, I do have a proclamation to present. Is it okay if I go ahead and do that first? Okay. I may have two. Has Mr. Rogers arrived this evening? Okay, so it should be just one, then. At this time, I'd ask Crystal Hutchins and Daniel Hale to join me at the podium, please. As I said, this is Crystal Hutchins and Daniel Hale. They're with Tennessee Voices for Children, and we're talking about children's mental health awareness. And this is a proclamation to help raise awareness of what they and similar organizations do throughout our state and throughout our country. So I'm going to read this proclamation, and then welcome them to say a few words if they like. This says, "Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families today is fundamental to the citizens of Gallatin, and whereas the need for comprehensive, coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being, and whereas Tennessee Voices for Children, through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families in our community. Now, therefore, I, Page Brown, Mayor of Gallatin, do hereby proclaim May 9th, 2019, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and urge our citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of the city of Gallatin with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children, youth, and young adults with mental health needs and their families." And so I am proud to present this proclamation to Tennessee Voices for Children, and I guess we will have a photo, but I would also welcome you to say any words, if you like. Mr. Hale?
Just wanted to say thank you all for this proclamation and for making this day, and notice of children's mental health and aids. Thank you.
Thank you all so much, and congratulations. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you all for indulging us that for just a minute. Now we will move on into public recognition on agenda-related items. This is for the items that are on this evening's agenda. Anyone may come forward. They may speak to any item that is on the agenda. Do want to tell you that at the end of the meeting, there is a time for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. Also want to tell you that there are four public hearings this evening. So if you want to speak about any of those items, I would suggest you do so under those public hearings. The public hearings are about the Gallatin zoning ordinance, some changes at Big Station Camp Creek Boulevard, the Windsong development, and some Kensington Row plans. So if you want to speak about any of those, I would ask that you do it during those hearings. But otherwise, right now, public recognition on agenda-related items would be considered open. You may come forward, introduce yourself, and give us your name and address, please. Okay, I see no one indicating that they wish to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items, so I will declare that public recog—oh, did you?
Okay.
That's fine. So I will declare that closed, and that will move us now into Mayor's comments. And I just have a few things, a few items of reminder for this council this evening. This Saturday, and for the public, you'll enjoy hearing about these as well. This Saturday is the Fashion Crawl and Crawfish Boil on the Square, happening from 10 until 5:00. The Cruise Inn happens in the Gallatin City Hall parking lot from 4:00 until 8:00. And at the Palace Theater, both this Saturday and Sunday, is the Gone with the Wind 80th Anniversary, and they'll be showing Gone with the Wind there. Next Wednesday is Peace Officers Memorial Day, and next Thursday, there will be a law enforcement appreciation luncheon at Volunteer State Community College. On Saturday, the 18th, is the Kids to Parks Day, and that's going to be happening at Triple Creek Park from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Also, next Sunday, we're going to be having our second annual decoration day at the Gallatin City Cemetery. And council, I did want to remind you that you've all received an invitation to the Main Street Awards Breakfast at Gallatin Civic Center. Let our office know if you want to attend, and we will let them know. I think that would be all under events that I want to remind you all of, unless someone else has one that I didn't mention. Nope. Okay, we will move now into the regular agenda. I do have one item that, with this council's permission, I would like to move. That would be item number five, and I would like to move it to item number two, purely for conveniences' sake, so Ms. Love won't have to read that description twice. Everyone okay with that? All right, we will do that. So the first item on the agenda this evening is the public hearing on ordinance 01903-17, and for that, Councilwoman Love is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin approving an amendment to the Gallatin zoning ordinance, Article 2, Section 02.02. It's on. Is it not working? Definitions, Article 3, Use Classification, Section 3.02, Listing of Activity Classification, Section 03.05, Residential Activities, Class and Types, Section 3.07, Commercial Activities, Class and Types, Section 3.8, Manufacturing Activities, Class and Types, Article 8, Provisions for Commercial Districts, Section 8.01, Intent and Purpose of the Core Commercial Districts, Section 8.03, Intent and Purpose of Commercial General Districts, and Article 9, Provisions for Industrial Districts, Section 9.01, General Purposes and Intent of Industrial Districts, Section 9.02, Intent and Purposes of the Industrial Restrictive Districts, and Section 9.03, Intent and Purposes of the IG, Industrial General District, to modify the permitted uses, permitted uses with conditions, conditional uses and prohibited uses, and amending Article 15 Administration and Enforcement, Section 15.06, Conditional Use Permits, authorizing the revisions to be made on the zoning ordinance, repealing conflicting ordinances providing for severity and providing for an effective date. This is a public hearing.
So a public hearing on ordinance 01903-17 is now open. Anyone may come forward that wishes to speak to this. Seeing no one, I will declare a public hearing on ordinance number 01903-17 closed. We will move now to item number five, which is a second reading on the same ordinance, and for that, Councilwoman Love.
This is the second reading on ordinance 01903-17, and that's what I just read a moment ago, so I so moved.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Overton. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading of ordinance 01903-17. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is public hearing on ordinance 01904-21. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, reaffirming the mixed-use district zoning on three lots totaling 1.35 acres, Group B parcels 013.00, 014.00, and 015.00, and approving a preliminary master development plan for 378, 382, and 386 Big Station Camp Boulevard, located south of the intersection of Big Station Camp Boulevard and Long Hollow Pike. This is a public hearing.
A public hearing on ordinance 01904-21 is now open. If anyone would like to speak, you may come forward at this time. I see no one wishing to speak, so I'll declare public hearing on ordinance 01904-21 closed. Moving now to item number three, which is public hearing on ordinance 01904-22. Vice Mayor Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Summerville County, Tennessee, rezoning 126.36 plus or minus acres, consisting of 17.16 plus or minus acres from R-15 medium-density residential district to the PGC Plan General Commercial, 14.02 acres plus or minus from the R-20 low-density residential district to the PGC Plan General Commercial District, 76.45 plus or minus acres from R-15 medium-density residential to MRO, multiple residential and office, and 18.73 acres from R-20 low-density residential district to MRO, multiple residential and office, with a preliminary master plan development plan for Windsong located on the north of Highway 109 and west of Southwater Avenue, authorizing vision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severity, and providing for effective date. This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing on ordinance 01904-22. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward at this time. And if there are more than one person wishing to speak, I'd ask that you go ahead and be ready when the next person is finished, so.
It's a fight.
And ask that you introduce yourself and give us your address, too, please.
Excuse me?
Your name and address when you introduce yourself.
Les Cleveland, and I live at 1104 Savannah Avenue in Elk Acres, and I'm asking that the board approve the—approve this agenda item as it's our—with connecting Savannah Avenue to Ryan Avenue, with connecting both Savannah Avenue and Ryan Avenue to the new Windsong development. One, it will provide two more exits from our subdivision to streets where we can actually go to other places within Gallatin. Not only will it do that, but it also will make it so we can walk over to the new businesses and ride bicycles to the new businesses. I lead a hike I've been doing for a couple of months on the greenway here in Gallatin. It's beautiful greenway, but it's also nice to have streets that you can go from one place to another. And the only one—keep in mind, the only one we have is 109. I'll talk—just a second about that. But also, it is safer. You know, you're going to hear a lot about safety tonight. I challenge you, if you're going to vote no on this, to go there from the hours of 6:30 to 8:30 to Elk Acres, turn across traffic if you're coming from one direction on 109, and go to the back of Savannah and Ryan where it's going to end, and just see what our traffic is like, and try to get out on 109. Now, keep in mind, if you don't extend those streets, for all practical purposes in this room, it's forever probably for us. But if you don't, the buses—think about safety. You're going to hear about, "Our kids aren't safe if we open that up so there could be a little additional traffic." Think about 109. Hopefully, if you do what I—what I was just stating, you will see the school bus trying to cut across that traffic. In order to go to Guild Elementary, every single time a bus goes to Guild Elementary and it picks up students, it has—to—they have to cross 109. And also, any parent who goes out and comes back and delivers their child to that school has to go out in 109. Imagine what 109 is going to be like in about a year and a half when it's finished construction, and over the several years, we won't have any access coming out of that Elk Acres except for 109. And people will say, "Well, they'll put a light in." No. Most likely, it's done by the state, and they probably won't put a light in because it's only one subdivision with 200 homes. There's going to be all kinds of requests to put lights in on 109, and that one would probably be denied. But the only other thing I want to say is this idea about putting gates in. It's not a wall, but it's a gate. That was suggested, I guess, at the last meeting. What are we going to start doing? Like, businesses come in, we have a—a development, we're going to put a gate between the business and, let's say, a multifamily unit with three cars? Are we going to—when it goes from three cars—garages to one car garage, are we going to put a gate in there? I—I just think that we need to really think this. And my final point, and then I've done, is that frequently you will hear talk about, "We don't have planning," all bad traffic and everything. A lot of times, the reason we don't have planning is we won't listen to the planners and the elected officials as they try to put these plans together. We end up with this type of situation almost every single time when it's rental or multifamily. You're going to hear a lot about safety, but ultimately, it probably comes down to that. I want to thank you for all the great work you're doing. You have a very difficult job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cleveland.
My name is Jessica Stanfield. I live at 494 Ryan Avenue. Good evening. I come before you tonight about the Windsong development. I, too, live in Elk Acres. I, too, cross 109 every day and feel 100% safe. I go to Mount Juliet twice a day to take my daughter to and from gymnastics. I go to Guild Elementary. I cross those streets every day and don't have a problem because I use common sense. And if a traffic light is put in at Windsong, there will be a stoppage in traffic, just like there's a stoppage coming towards the Lebanon and Mount Juliet area when the light here turns red. There's going to be breaks in traffic to allow people to safely get in and out, as I do every day. But I come before you tonight with a petition from the residents of Elk Acres. This petition has nearly 160 signatures. And trust me, I cannot get to everyone in our neighborhood. Many people thought I was a solicitor or just not home when I went by. I also did not get to every home in the community. But what I can tell you is that 160 people overwhelmingly expressed that they do not want connectivity of our streets on Ryan Avenue and Savannah Avenue. Many of the people cannot attend these meetings due to work obligations, extracurricular activities for their children, attending classes, or just health issues. I began the petition for that very reason. Most people have obligations that deter their presence at these meetings. However, they want their voice to be heard. Their physical presence here should not be the only way their voice on this matter counts. As I met with people, I heard—I heard several concerns, reasons why residents of the Elk Acres do not feel the connection of the streets makes sense. One of the concerns is safety of children's and residents. We have families in our subdivision. Children often can be seen riding bikes and scooters. They throw football, they play tag, they have basketball games in our streets. When you connect the streets to possibly 370 homes on those two streets with their vehicles traveling—to exit via Elk Acres, our traffic will increase significantly, making the safety of my children a concern. Many people also back out of their driveways, and they're going to have to worry now more as they do back out for that oncoming traffic. Another concern is speeding. Ryan Avenue and Savannah Avenue will become a speedway. We currently have issues with residents and their guests speeding. This issue will only increase significantly. Chief Bandi is concerned about this as well. Residents and concerned citizens have asked the council to call him up for his opinion a few times, but it seems like we get ignored. If a seasoned police chief is concerned about the connectivity of this development to others, shouldn't his concern matter? Will it take the loss of a life or a lawsuit from an accident that could have been avoided for this council to take these concerns seriously? Over my time speaking with neighbors, they have been very concerned about the volume of traffic. The developer plans to start at what connects at Elk Acres as well as the retail first, so both ends. Those residential will be forced to use the Elk Acres entrance and exit to travel out because once a construction begins, they're going to have a hard time getting out easily with the construction traffic and the roadways. Once they begin traveling our way, it's going to become a habit, and we all know habits are hard to break. With Elk Acres having a hill as entrance and an exit, traffic will quickly back up. Accidents will likely occur as well because the stoplight's not going to be in for a while. There will also be no way to control the backup of traffic as Elk Acres did not—does not have a traffic light in their future. That will never happen. Residents will not only be forced to deal with the extra traffic noise and volume, but now they will be forced to have a plan for extra time to their destination. In closing, I implore this council to put the voices of nearly 160 people in this neighborhood first. I can assure you that if 160 people storm these chambers, that your vote on the connectivity would be—would be impacted. So let this petition carry the same importance. Listen to the people. After all, that is part of what you're elected to do. I do have my petition, and I'm assuming that I'll need the handles.
Thank you, Ms. Stanfield. Next.
My name is Holly Cunningham. I'm at 537 Calley Avenue in Elk Acres. I was here last meeting about Windsong, and I just want to reiterate what Jessica just said and what I said last time. I am not for the connectivity. One of the draws to Elk Acres when my husband bought our house in October was the one in and one out. Even with that one in and one out, we had theft at our home over the holidays from an outsider of our subdivision thinking that they could come in and steal packages off of our porches. I was not the only one affected by this. By giving us two more ins and outs, that's just going to make it easier for people who do not live in the subdivision. It's going to be harder to control, harder to see who's coming in and out of our subdivision, and that does make me worry for the safety. As far as the emergency gates that were brought up last meeting, I'm completely fine with the roadways being connected as long as they're there. I don't want public to have access to my subdivision more than they already do. I think that is a good compromise. I think it should be discussed further. With 160 people that signed this petition, that—that should be listened to. I work in Brentwood. It took me an hour and 35 minutes to get here today. Didn't even have time to go home. My husband works in Bowling Green today. He's not here. People have jobs that are far away from Gallatin. They have children activities. Not everybody can be here. We have a lot of people in our subdivision who are not able to be here. So by that petition, they're able to essentially tell you what they do and do not want. We voted you in, and I think that our voices need to at least be heard. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Susan Osmansky. I'm at 1070 Savannah Avenue in Elk Acres, and I've been on record that I oppose this Windsong development 100%. I come from the probably most corrupt county in Pennsylvania, if not the country, Luzerne County. If you remember hearing about the Kids for Cash scandal, that's Luzerne County. Wilkes-Barre is the county seat and is the heart of the corruption. Residents and taxpayers are ignored, and the politicians do what they want. From what I've seen so far, even with this Windsong issue, I believe this planning—the planning commission and the council are giving Luzerne County a run for its money. Just an example is the Mr. Perrier's conflict of interest with having all these developments being put in, and his loss of the Elk Acres contract, landscaping—sunskipping contract. The beautiful green areas that used to be a draw for this city are being destroyed by unnecessary overdevelopment fostered and encouraged by these politicians. Wait until your property taxes, which is already happening, and utility costs double or triple to pay for the additional infrastructure. It's not just the development here or the development there, it's a compilation of all of them. You will be paying— Your taxpayers. —not the developers. They just get rich and walk away. That is what's common in Wilkes-Barre. Older folks have to sell their houses because they can no longer afford the property taxes. A far better use for the prior Patterson property would be a community open green space, community gardens, walking trails, a parking area with walking access from the surrounding developments. We don't need more crammed-in housing and traffic and retail, and certainly not a hotel, storage area, and gas stations. My opinion—in my opinion, Gallatin is no longer what you would consider the nicest city in America for 2017 nicest city in America. With all this massive unnecessary overdevelopment, perhaps we should start writing letters to the editor of Reader's Digest and tell them how this city is rapidly being destroyed when just a short time ago was a really attractive, beautiful city. And the—my last—with all these comments, I would like to turn things around for a minute and give kudos to the police department. My husband is a social media geek, and always sees posts about how kind officers were when people had problems, and what a good job the officers do. Thank you, Chief. Your department is a breath of fresh air in increasingly depressing overcrowded city. Your department truly serves the people. Thank you.
My name is Ronald Osmansky, and I'm actually her husband.
Would you do me a favor and spell y'all's last name? Because I haven't gotten it yet.
It's O-S-M-A-N-S-K-I.
Thank you.
Okay. So every week, like she said, I'm a social media geek, but I'm going to tell you that in line with what Jessica said, I, too—I work out of the city. I work near the V and A. I feel safe coming out of Elk Acres onto 109 and pulling in. The light on Southwater Avenue, when that goes on, that street clears. I feel safe on—the roads, even going to work, and I go to work at 5:30 in the morning in the dark. So, I mean, I don't see the need to have interconnecting roads or more—or more ways out of Elk Acres, and if there was a crime that was committed, I'd rather have one way out so that the police chief and his force could block that road if—if they were still there and stop those people. And we—we know that, you know? If—if the people that are going to be in whatever retail you put there, they're going to come speeding down Savannah Avenue, and Ryan Ave—a kid's going to get hurt or killed, a car's going to get damaged, or—or worse, or property's going to get damaged. So I'm totally against interconnecting those roads, and I'm also against the Windsong development in total. Every week on social media, we see more and more new development projects. We also take note of the fact that the majority of the residents who post to those postings, who are, by the way, taxpayers in Gallatin, oppose such development. Your latest—you're latest casualty is Hudson Farms on Berry Lane. Today, there was a posting for it. I think there was over 100 people that opposed it on there. And one guy said, "Why do you oppose it?" One out of 100 and some. It is disgusting to watch your committee continually destroy the beauty of our city and continually let these developers create a more unsafe, insecure, and unappealing environment near or in our subdivisions and neighborhoods. I've watched, as my wife has addressed various committees at some of these meetings concerning the Windsong project, and I was appalled at the treatment of the residents who came to express their feelings regarding the development of Windsong. It would be better, Mayor, if you just say, "We don't care what you have to say. We're going to do what we want anyway." It really doesn't matter what you say. This was evidenced at a committee meeting when a person sitting at your table said, "Although most of the residents oppose it, we have to do what's best for Gallatin." And you were sitting, I think, over there across from him. You don't care about the residents, their feelings, their concern, and what a legacy for your administration to have. The developer said at one meeting, quoting from an article in Nashville Journal, "Home sales in Nashville drop 6% in Nashville. A city that doesn't grow dies." To even suggest that Nashville is a dying city is not only ridiculous but ludicrous. According to a WKRN report a few weeks ago, 86% of the residents want their growth to slow or stop. Let me rephrase the last part of his sentence and say, "A city that grows too fast with elected officials that don't take the—" elected officials that don't take the residents' concerns seriously dies. I want to ask how ignoring the will of the people, disrespecting their concerns, and totally dismissing their ideas is in line with her honor and the elected official's belief that Gallatin is the nicest city in America. Evidence by John Purrier saying at his planning meeting, "I want and believe the roads should be interconnected, dismissing the residents concerned," and even some of people on his committee. You, Mayor, and your cohorts don't care about the residents' safety and security and investment in their homes, and you, Mayor Paige Brown, is destroying our city and its beauty. Another favorite term of yours, and I've noticed this in the past two meetings, seems to be, this is not a Q and A. I guess you don't feel the residents are entitled to asking any questions or getting any answers. So my wife is still waiting on three committees to find out why John Purrier is on that committee when he had a conflict of interest, why he didn't recuse himself. She has not gotten an answer in three committees that she's asked. So I'm going to give you an example of a Q and A, and I'll take both parts. The Q is on the election day when you and your elected committee members are on that ballot in front of me saying, vote for me, and my A will be a resounding no. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next, please.
Penny Baker. I live at 481 Cali Avenue. I'll try not to be repetitive of things you've already heard, so I'll just take a minute and skip over some things. But one concern was, or maybe a question is, do we know what the current average daily traffic is right now on either or both Ryan and Savannah? Did we do a study to even know what it is right now? And what are the requirements of, say, that the city or county requires a pavement width? So say your car traffic is 500 to 1,000 cars a day. What is the required width if it gets to be over 1,000 a day? Because, you know, where we're at, we're not talking about, like, you know, I know that maybe in the future, say, Twin Eagles is going to intercept, you know, end up having another entrance off Douglas Lane, which, you know, so you have a busy, pretty busy 25, and then Douglas Lane, not so busy. We're talking about where we're at is 109 and 109, you know? Everybody around here knows where 109 and 109 is. It's busy. We stand a chance of becoming Little 109 in certain situations. If we have wrecks, you know, we have wrecks in that area quite often. We stand a chance of that. So our traffic on those two roads can go up considerably. And they're really small roads. They're not, you know, they're not extremely wide, and you don't have a lot of area for growth on either side if you're... Because I kind of think that somewhere in our planning that we have already in existing ordinances or whatever of how wide a street has to be based on the average daily traffic. I'm not sure, but I think that exists. But, you know, I was just thinking about other neighborhoods that, you know, have a considerably amount of homes in it that are kind of new. And I did, I used to have a home in Twin Eagles, and that has over 400 homes in it. It has one entrance. I know that eventually it's going to have another one on Douglas, but we had one entrance. Why would this neighborhood that's coming up, the Win Song, why would... It already has two proposed. Why would we give it two more? I don't, I mean, it seems like two and maybe even lighted entrances. Why would we, why would we want to, you know, risk just even the integrity of our neighborhood by making it a throughway for, you know, becoming possible Little 109? To me, if you create any throughroads, you will be responsible for changing the quality of life by making the streets less safe. I know that, you know, the guy previous, first guy, said, you're going to hear all about safety. Well, you know, the research I did, which, you know, of course, it's always, it's online anymore, right? But pulled up cities that have went through this before, and basically, you know, when it comes down to it, most would say that the only reason why you would do a throughway in a neighborhood is because of poor planning. That you do risk the lot, you know, the chance of changing the quality of lives by doing it less safe for children because, like, right now, you know, in your neighborhood, even though, you know, I might not have a child myself or I don't personally know the people, I know that this house has kids that play quite often and sometimes, you know, riding their bikes in the street. I know this one does. So consciously, I'm going to be aware that people that don't live in our neighborhood, you know, they're not going to be worried about that. They're just trying to get through. So I think you, you know, you, you know, maybe increase crime and property damage just by, you know, increasing the traffic and population. So, and then the other thing is that if you do end up letting that happen, I would hope that you would still control the traffic somehow. I don't know how. I mean, you know, I hate speed bumps and stuff, but, you know, you just wouldn't want it to become that fast cut-through, which is going to happen in certain situations. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Baker, Mr. McCord, show him who you are, Bill. He can answer your questions, and Mr. Tuttle on road widths and the traffic surveys and at what points those happen. So I'd follow up with either of them at a later date, and they'll be able to tell you those answers. Next.
Hello, I'm Melissa Brown, 1005 Duncan Street. I'm going to lighten things up a little bit. I love Gallatin. I've lived here all my life, born and raised here. Never thought of leaving except to go to college. I live two lots down from where the road will be opened on Duncan Street if this passes. I have some concerns of my safety, my grandchildren's safety. I've raised my kids here. My grandkids are being raised here. It's going to be impossible to get in my driveway. I'm probably the youngest by 20 or 30 years in my neighborhood. People go to their mailbox, walk the streets. We have no sidewalks, and I don't think there's any way to accommodate sidewalks because of the ditches and the old, it's the old neighborhood. I like to keep it the old neighborhood. I can see that Maple Street, Duncan will be a thoroughfare if we cut that through. People will turn off Maple Street either way and just go straight through. I can, I sit out back a lot at night because I like to watch the squirrels and birds and all this, and I hear cars racing down Jocelyn as it is, motorcycles and stuff. And it's late at night, so there's not a lot, anybody out walking or whatever, but I can see that happening on my road if this opens up. And to be honest with you, I'd use it too. I would cut through. My parents live at Lennox Place, and they're elderly. I take care of them. I go over there a couple times every day, and I would use that cut-through. So it's going to also hinder the people that are buying the new houses as far as they're going to have more traffic, and it's not going to be as friendly a neighborhood to them either. So I just wish y'all would take that into consideration. I understand the safety as far as wanting the police and fire trucks to be able to get through, and I've heard something about a gate, and, I mean, maybe that's an option, but I would like to just keep it shut the way it is. You know, I know that the plan's going to go on, but that's just my recommendation, and I thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Schaefer. I live at 495 Ryan Avenue in Elk Acres. And my neighbor Jessica read my statements three weeks ago to you, but I wanted to come and address you in person to express my concern over this passing. As I don't have children myself, but I enjoy watching the children, and I think it's so appropriate you were having a proclamation regarding children tonight because these children play up and down these sidewalks. And a few weeks ago, I saw a neighbor take out a mailbox. So imagine if that had been a child. And it's just, it's too risky. We already have 200 homes in Elk Acres, minimum 400 cars probably traveling our streets. Adding even one car is a danger. And just for the sake of some development of a business, please tell me you don't want this to be your legacy. If a kid dies out there, do you want that? You cannot. Please tell me. Please vote against this. I beg you. It is not good for our community. And I've heard that we want to keep the traffic off the major streets and on the side streets. That makes no sense whatsoever. Can you tell me that makes any sense? No. Please vote against this. Our kids are relying on you. Please. Vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer.
I need just a minute. I've got too many papers and I don't have enough hands. I'm Catherine Connor. I live at 842 Stephanie Street. I spoke at the April 16th council meeting and asked the council to reconsider the road extension of Duncan Street into the new development. During the open discussion, Councilmember Love brought up the possibility of installing an emergency gate, which I appreciate that. Thank you. I felt like I was really being listened to. Fire Chief Williams said that it would be acceptable to him, and forgive me, I don't remember the zoning person that you had come up and talked, but he said that would be okay with him.
It was probably Mr. McCord.
Thank you. Since this was discussed only and no amendment was made about not extending Duncan Street into the new development, I've started thinking about what I could do to make you realize just how detrimental opening that street would be to our neighborhood. So I wrote a petition. So, and you'll forgive me, I failed every single art class I ever had. But here's what I have. It's upside down, sorry. Every X you see is the house I spoke to who said no. This is, this is the entire, not the entire one, but it's the homes I spoke to.
Ma'am, keep your comments to the council, please.
Oh, sorry. I didn't know how this worked.
It's okay.
As you could tell earlier, because I spoke up out of turn.
No, you're fine.
Sorry. Okay. So the petition states, "We, the undersigned, call on you, our elected representatives, to sponsor an amendment to the first reading of ordinance number 01904-22, sponsored by our district councilman, Steve Camp. As residents of Halewood Estates, District 2, we will be directly affected by the extension of Duncan Street as ordinance number 0190422 is currently written. We require the amendment be made. We require an amendment be made that will eliminate the proposed road extension or install an emergency gate to which only first responders will have access. As current city councilmembers, you have heard from many Halewood Estate residents expressing their disapproval of the Duncan Street extension. Also citing existing speeding and safety issues, Gallatin Police Chief Bandy has concerns regarding the planned extension." And then I have the ordinance as it's written. Citing these concerns, we require the amendment be made to ordinance number 0190422. And it took me six days. I did this in six days. I visited 60 homes, 60 households. I spoke with 86 persons. Eighty-four of those persons said no, they don't want the road extension. Only one household that I visited said yes, that she, the wife, wanted the road opened. And the husband's not an idiot, so he said, I counted his as abstained because he wanted whatever his wife wanted. So I spoke with 60 households, 86 persons. Eighty-four people said no, they do not want Duncan Street connected to the new development. So for the last two weeks, I have been meeting my neighbors. I've been shaking hands, petting puppies, and kissing babies. And here's what I found. I found Mr. Randall lives on Duncan Street, and he stated he had a hard enough time raising his children on Duncan Street and couldn't imagine more traffic in front of his home. I found Ms. Mildred, whose driveway enters Duncan, however, her address is Trina. She shared with me that she and her husband built that home 53 years ago. They've lived there for 53 years and raised their family. She now keeps her granddog full-time and her grandchildren after school. She fenced her entire yard, her front and her back, to keep her family safe. Ms. Susan lives on Duncan. However, when we met, she was walking her daughter across Duncan... Is that my time?
Yes.
Okay. I'm almost finished. When we met, she was walking her seven-year-old daughter to High Street so her daughter could ride her bike safely. I was surprised. I was so surprised by the number of grandparents I met who are raising their school-aged children. Many of my neighbors have small children and find it challenging to keep them safe with the amount of traffic and speeders we currently have in our neighborhood, and most, like me, are dog owners. So just to reiterate, 60 households, 86 persons, 84 people support the petition. So I implore you, I am here representing those people. Every single one of them thanked me for my time and thanked me for doing this. It's important to us. But most importantly, what I found was that my neighbors became my friends. So what I'm telling you, members of the council, is that my friends and I do not want this road extension through our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Connor.
What do you need?
You can leave this with us. Unless you want a copy of it or something, we'll make you one. I think that's so cute.
Do you need the petition, maybe after?
Do you have a separate signature than that? You can give it to Ms. Kettrell.
Yeah, I don't want them walking around each other. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Todd Alexander, 217 Strange Circle. I have a degree in business administration, and so I am not ignorant of multimillion-dollar budgets. And I am not, it's not lost on me that this development is a major revenue gain for the city of Gallatin. Where the Pattersons currently pay some $3,500 a year in property tax, it's going to be quite an increase if this development goes through. We've already heard codes departments say that somewhere north of $1 million just in permits, and I would certainly conservatively guess that property taxes, sales tax revenues would generate that much annually toward the city. And so I understand where the side, you've got a 30-something million-dollar budget, and you've got an opportunity to have some serious revenue come in to the city. But here on my street, I still have concerns. And when I voiced them a couple weeks ago at the meeting, I appreciate Councilwoman Love, who asked Mr. Caldwell, the representative from Reagan Smith, about the water runoff concerns. And I heard the answer, the same answer that I heard during the planning commission, and that was, I'm confident that we're going to be able to take care of it. I'm just going to tell you, that doesn't make me warm and fuzzy inside. I believe Mr. Caldwell probably thinks he can, but nothing has been shown to the planning commission or to this council that this is how we're going to take care of the people in the Halewood subdivision where I lived. I've not heard that. I think the most sobering thing that happened in your last meeting was when, I believe it was Councilman Hayes asked the question, what if they build this and it doesn't work? Water does come down. Do we have a recourse? And the city attorney said, yes, if they don't build it correctly with, up to the codes or the plans that we have approved, that we do have a recourse. And then one of the gentlemen asked, well, what if they build it like they plan, but it doesn't work? And your answer, city attorney, was excellent. There a hush fell over the room, and you said, that's why we better get it right now. And I want to encourage you to do that. We've got to get this thing right now so much. I read the newspaper after the meeting and was kind of looking to see what comments and what was the take from the newspaper. And the newspaper mentioned all of the safety concerns. You've heard many of them today. safety concerns, we've heard many of them today. Concerns about water runoff, and, and here I am again, my fourth time, uh, in this room talking about it, the second time to this council. And the last paragraph of the newspaper article said, "After all these citizens had made comments with their concerns, the only change to the proposal was a playground." I'm all for playgrounds, don't, don't label me anti-playground. But that's the only change to this proposal. I want to encourage you to slow this thing down, think this thing out, make sure we have something that will really work. I've been assured by Mr. Caldwell, I've been assured by the developer, I believe his name's Mr. Argo, forgive me if I got it wrong, but, uh, we're not gonna, we're not gonna dump any water on you, but yet, the, the civil engineers say the water's got to come down toward us. And so something's got to be done. I just want to encourage you, listen, we don't need words and promises. You need to see something that says, "We're going to take care of this situation. We're going to take care of this problem." That's what I expect my city leaders to do, is to, to hear my concerns and, and say, "This is what I believe we're going to do." They've, they've committed a hundred thousand dollars, hopefully the city will, will match that, but you and I both know two hundred thousand dollars on a major drainage, uh, project is, is not a lot of money. But, but show us something that you're listening to us and that you're, you're believing that there really is going to be something done and that we're not up here just wasting our breath, because this thing feels like, to the people sitting in this room, this thing feels like it's a done deal and that we're just going through motions. And I, I hate that feeling, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Next.
Hi, my name's Lori Tuck, ten fourteen Johnson Street, um, and I'm here, I'm concerned about the drainage problem. Uh, when we purchased our home nine years ago, the, the second phase of Elk Acres was not there. When you looked out of our side yard, you looked at pretty green farmland. Um, now, um, you, and it was flat. Um, now they have built Elk Acres, um, it is elevated, and we are already, if you want to see the drainage issue, anytime it rains, please come to ten fourteen Johnson Street and stand in my yard. It becomes waterfront property. Um, one of the last storms, that was very heavy, it came within about fifteen feet of our central heat and air unit. Um, we were out there with flashlights trying to see how close it was going to come. Um, we've also had to remove a storage shed that was in the very corner of our property because when the water does come through, um, it's very rapid rolling water. It has, and it ruined, it flooded that storage shed and we had to remove it. Um, during the last storm also, that was very heavy, the water was coming down the side of our property, curving around to go under the culvert, and it was actually going over the road. The culvert couldn't handle, handle the volume of water that was coming through. So with adding this many more homes, businesses to the property that is currently undeveloped, I can't imagine the amount of water that that is going to push onto our property. Um, so I'm very concerned about the drainage problem we already have, and then you're going to add to the top of that. The one good thing about the phase two of Elk Acres that was built through is they can no longer extend our street because it now deadends to the back of the house, so that I'm not concerned about the traffic because we are on the dead end. But, um, I don't know if there's anyone that we can talk to, to find out about the drainage plan, um, and what will be done with the development, but there is already a drainage issue, um, and there's going to be even bigger one. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Tuttle, who I showed before, can help with drainage questions, and his department can get you with the right people.
I am Evan Hammond, and I reside at ten seventy-one Savannah Avenue in Elk Acres.
Would you say your name one more time, please?
Evan Hammond. Mayor Brown and council members. Listening is hard work, isn't it? In order to better understand how our city works, I've begun talking to city employees while I am impressed and grateful for their knowledge, enthusiasm, and courtesy. Concerning the agenda topic of Windsong, I have signed a petition written by Jessica Stanfield, and it rejects, as you know, the streets connecting Elk Acres and Windsong. I'll also support the residents of Hale Estates who do not want any street connection with Windsong. However, my primary worry tonight is about the quality of storm-warm management in Windsong. I have noticed local, state, and national weather steadily becoming unpredictable. Extreme rain and costly flooding are occurring more often. Some cities have already suffered greatly by not being as well-prepared as they could have been. Specifically, I propose that water detention be designed for at least one-hundred-year floods, that native grasses be used in landscaping where feasible, and that the city council provide close oversight over storm-water management for Windsong. I want our city to be proactive and progressive about storm-water management and green infrastructure. I thirst, if you will, for Gallatin to continue to be one of the best places to live. I wish you a productive and courteous evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Richard Hart. I live at two-two-eight Leocourt in Elk Acres. Uh, my main concern is safety for the kids in the neighborhood that play in the streets, especially in ours because it's a cul-de-sac. But, uh, through all these hearings, I've heard about additional traffic coming in and going out, and I just want to say, it's not going to be additional traffic in the morning when people are going to work, or in the evening when they're coming home for work. It's going to be people going to the different businesses that are opening up in the new development. So the traffic going through Elk Acres will be something that's continuous throughout the day. And I don't know if anybody's brought it up or council was aware of that, but it's, it's not just going to be a morning and evening additional traffic, it's going to be more traffic throughout the day. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Andrew Stokely. I live at four-thirty-eight Nichols Circle West. Um, I, I don't join the subdivision, I live, uh, several blocks away off Nichols Lane. Um, I'd first like to say I like the development, I like the idea of commercial, especially fresh commercial on this side of town. Um, I do have several concerns, however, as the plan is currently written. Uh, there's very little buffering or screening, it's inadequate. Uh, you've got one of the, the largest or one of the most major roads in the state of Tennessee with one oh-nine bypass, I mean, they're using it basically as eight forty. You've got housing that's going to back directly up to it with minimal screening. Um, I'd hate to live in one of those houses because the road noise is going to be horrific. You know, I would ask, um, you know, would like to see burms or some other type of screening in place there, not only for the residents, but also for the traffic flow. I shouldn't have to look in somebody's back, back door of their house. I mean, there should be better, uh, management for that, uh, and not wait twenty years for the screening to basically grow and be in place. Uh, as you're aware, that area, you've got a mix of fences that are half-falling down, half-stained, um, it's not, not necessarily Gallatin's best foot forward, so I would like to see some variation of that, uh, that, that gives a better aesthetic look. Um, I am concerned, I mean, if you look at the apartments that are built out of Harris Lane, out behind the Jeep Chrysler dealership, they're sitting directly on the road. I mean, there's no screening, there's no burms, there's no anything, they're just right there on top of the road. Um, if you look at Fairview, you know, Fairview is probably one of the nicest developments, if not in the U.S., definitely in the southeast, and, uh, I mean, it bankrupted two developers trying to build it, and we've now allowed that next phase to come in, and they're literally sitting directly on top of the road. And I don't understand, you know, why there wasn't some pushback. Um, I understand the planning commission, you know, they basically have to do what MTask is asking them to do, you know, and say, "Well, it technically falls within the guidelines, but you're elected officials, you can vote it up or vote it down." I mean, you're, you're, you're the, you're the fire barrier, basically the fire line to stop this kind of stuff. And I would ask you, I'm not saying stop the development, but let's have good development. Let's come back twenty, thirty years from now and be proud of what was built, not say, "You know, I wish we'd set that back another twenty feet or twenty-five feet." Um, so I would ask you to look at that. The other, the other main concern that I've got is, is that the homes that are being proposed are less than seventy-five percent, uh, masonry construction. Uh, it's a front brick with hardy board with siding on three sides. Um, it adjoins two subdivisions that are predominantly seventy-five percent or better in brick. I mean, those subdivisions were built in, you know, the sixties and seventies as well as the two thousands, and the boards then had the foresight to allow those to go in, but yet now, um, you know, the, I, I would like to see a higher level, at least the exterior homes to be brick. I don't think that's too much to ask, especially the ones backing up to the roadways. Um, in, in closure, I would just like to say that, you know, I feel like with all the growth in Gallatin, we're missing some of the small details. You know, I have to come out Clear Lake Metal Boulevard where the new fire hall is. I encourage you, when you go home tonight, drive by there, drive on that road. You can't drive it, it is so rough. I mean, there's potholes out there right now that are literally twelve inches deep in the gravel. It's crazy. Um, you know, at some point, that's got to be addressed, so I'm afraid we're missing some of that. The new fire hall, we've got sandbags around one of the, uh, one of the, one of the roll-up doors, I mean, brand-new fire hall, and we've got sandbags around one of the doors to keep it from leaking. So, um, so anyways, so, uh, just in closure, I would ask you to send this back to, uh, uh, no, it's good. I would ask you to send this back to, uh, to committee to, uh, to have some, uh, review of it. I do like the development, I do like the idea of having some fresh commercial, um, and we just ask you, uh, to think, think for the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name, my name is Kelly Lannister, and I live at, uh, two-twenty-seven Hell Avenue. Uh, some of my neighbors have spoke tonight, and I really appreciate, uh, the way they've brought up the fact that we're trying to come together as a community and really encourage you guys to think about us as a community. Uh, we welcome a lot of the new development, some of the commercial, the publics will be great. Uh, I don't think many of us would be too in favor of a four-story hotel or a four-story, uh, climate-controlled storage facility. Uh, I echo what the gentleman just said before me. I think, uh, when we first went to the meeting the first night at the church, uh, they talked about certain width of a berm in the back, mainly where the apartments were and some of the, where the water retention. And I want to say at one of the meetings, that land seemed like it, it shrunk, so I would like to encourage you guys to try to negotiate, see if we can get, uh, a, a larger width between, uh, Hale Estates and this new development, uh, in addition to the, to the berm, uh, more of a buffer area, and all the plantings that might be put on there, try to negotiate and try to get maybe bigger trees, bigger shrubs, uh, I like the native grass, uh, aspect, too. Uh, we're really concerned about the flooding. Uh, we had the little micro burst of the shelf cloud last week, and I took a little video in front of, uh, my house and my neighbor's house, so I encourage you guys to maybe take a look at Hip Gallatin and search under my name, Kelly Lannister, and you'll see a video, uh, maybe, I'd say it rained maybe an hour or less.
I was going to offer, if you want to send that to me, I can send it to the council if you want.
Okay, I could do that. But it's a tremendous amount of rushing water in less than an hour. And, uh, we would, uh, I would like to see, you know, the commercial, all that, all that go through, uh, but the back half with the townhomes and everything, if that could be mitigated, cut in half, some, some negotiation where you don't have this huge high density that we're talking about. Uh, as far as the, uh, expansion of the roads, definitely against that. I see that as bringing traffic, safety issue, and, and crime to our neighborhood. And I would appreciate it if, uh, somebody could ask one of the developers tonight, and we're talking about that road extension, especially in Elk Acres. Uh, I drove through there, and on a couple of those streets, they've got traffic, uh, calming devices, and I'm wondering who's going to be responsible, how will that be changed if you guys do decide to go ahead and allow these roads to be put through? So if somebody could ask the developer that question, uh, maybe ask the developer, uh, what's going to happen if the sinkholes that exist back there, uh, they become larger? Is the city going to be responsible for all the roads after the developer is long gone? Uh, somebody could ask that question, I would appreciate that, too. Um, and there's also something, kind of a side issue, uh, I know you guys talked about it, I think at the last meeting, maybe the meeting before that, there's a little triangular commercial spot that is outside of this Windsong development on the corner of one oh-nine and South Waters. You know, I wish y'all would maybe consider what's going to happen with that little area and, uh, you know, how that area may be impacted if you put a four-story hotel or that storage building there. I think it'd be great, maybe if we had something that said, you know, "Welcome to the city of Gallatin," so our, when our neighbors come in from Wilson County and beyond, they, they can be, say, "Hey, we're, we're proud, this is our city." But I appreciate you guys for listening. I hope you hear a lot of what these folks are saying. Uh, we love Gallatin, I've been here twelve years, seen a lot of growth, seen a lot of good things, and hopefully we can continue that, uh, going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lannister.
How my name's Joe Beebe, I live at, uh, two-twenty-one Strange Circle.
Would you say your last name one more time?
Uh, Beebe, B-E-B-E-E. I'm the neighbor of Reverend Todd Alexander over here, which I express the same concerns he does with the flooding. Um, we have a major flooding area at the end of Strange Circle. I have sent a, a very good video to the sewer water manager that, um, of some of the flooding that goes on there and that, how much water comes off the Patterson property. Really haven't heard no response except, "We'll take a look at it on there." Um, everybody I show it to, eyes are wide open and can't believe what actually comes through there. I've had the, the city come out three times through, I'm saying, last five, seven years to see what could be done out there, and because they said it's a natural spring coming off that hill, there's nothing that can be done without a bunch of permits, you know, or, you know, a lot of money invested into it or something like that, and we're like, "Well, then, let's get the permits, let's have the meetings or whatever we got to do." Never heard anything else about it. It's a major problem over there. I've had my basement flooded probably, you know, which I'm, I'm sure a lot of people hear, five, six times a year, where I have, you know, sometimes five, six inches of water in my basement, just because the water has no place to go. It all converges into that one area between mine and, uh, Mr. Alexander's house there. Um, the ditch is not big enough. I asked them if they could just come in and take a backhoe and just widen the ditch up, you know, take them half an hour to do. Said they couldn't do it, you know, because there's a bunch of tree roots are running through it, and it's catching any of the debris coming down from the hill, and it just starts backing up, and then it goes, and you know, and obviously it gets backed up out there in the street because there's not enough drainage out in the streets out there. In certain areas, there is, I mean, certain areas, you've got concrete culverts out there, and all of a sudden, on the other side of the street, you've got culverts that looks like they haven't been attended to in ten years, and they're built up with, you know, dirt and stuff, and there's probably about that much showing of the culvert going underneath the driveways on the other side. So it's, it's a, and then we get all the water coming down from South Water that heads down in that area there. So we have a main concern when we start putting, you know, asphalt and concrete on top of these hills, and the water's got to go somewhere, you know, the water's got to go downhill, and we're, we're kind of ground zero there at the end of Strange Circle where a lot of this flooding's happening. Uh, there could be other places I'm not familiar with, you know, with other people, but I'm just, you know, telling you about my area down there. Um, I haven't talked to one person that is in agreement about this Windsong project, you know? A lot of people have trees behind their houses and stuff, I might have three trees back there and the rest was just open. So I'm going to be having all these townhouses on our, houses where they're going to be putting back on the backside, just staring down my back door, not real happy about it at all. Um, the, the edge of my property from my back porch is probably about from here to the wall, you know, and from there on, it's open field on there. So it, it's a very, very troubling to see this happening out there, especially after all this stuff, and I'm sure other people's heard that, you know, this land wasn't even supposed to be sold through the will of the Pattersons at the time. And we don't know how this has got around, you know, apparently there's a way around it because it's not what's happening. But I hope you really take in consideration of what, what these people are saying around here, that, that are coming up here to the podium and stating their, their mind on, on the situation. It, they're not up here for no reason. We're up here because we have a problem and like to state our concerns, and we hope to God that you guys are listening. God that you guys are listening to us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Pascal Jervance, one-three-three-five, Long Island Park, Madam Mayor, Council People. I'm not associated with Winsong in any case, but I've been coming to City Council for a while, and I try to pick on things I, you know, kinda, kinda bother me somewhere, and we went through that already personally with Kensington down. And I have to say, we had access to everybody here, and everybody here made a thought, I'm, I'm patting you on the back right there, including Nick and all the team. So, you guys are available if we need to talk to you. But I heard something from the developer, and I don't think I trust developers, I think they're kinda like politicians, we don't speak the same language. And, you know, I heard the word free swimming pool, sorry, wetland for the kids to play in. That was kinda interesting, and the hundred thousand dollars pledging to resolve the water issue, the water drainage issue, if the city's gonna put hundred thousand dollars. I have an issue with that, because that's our taxpayer money, who's gonna serve the purpose of a developer, when it's gonna impact the life of other people, so I, that doesn't work too good. Already?
No, sorry. I had not reset.
Can you restart? Reset now, so I have five more minutes?
No, no.
I sit on my wife for five minutes, so she can give it to me if I'm not done. The development's gonna impact everybody else, not just the people nearby, the people in Winsong. Four-hundred fifty-plus houses, generally, people have two cars per household, that's nine hundred cars on a road. I came from work today at four. The one oh, the one-oh-nine was bumper to bumper, all the way past Andersonville, so that's gonna impact everybody. The security gate, I see people have an issue with it, but I see a lot of, you know, I travel all over the place, I see a lot of gated community who have gates. And that's never been an issue. Fire department have access, police have, have access, and that serves everybody, so I don't know how that could work on. Maybe the next subdivision probably should look into of maybe becoming a gated community that would solve a bunch of problems. I heard about conflict of interest. I think that's kinda pushing a little, because everybody have conflict of, of interest there, because everybody has a job related to something, related to people. We have insurance, banker, real estate agent, so that's kinda, I should not even, what about, you guys have a job on top of this one, so keep doing your job. I think the problem we have with the developments right now is just the way they are made. We change the way we build houses. Before, we're building a decent-sized house on a nice lot where kids can go play on the green, green space, Gallatin Green, New Deal, you need to run on that. Kids can go outside, play on the green, it's kinda separated from the road. Now, they try to put the biggest house they can on the smaller slot. So, I'm gonna be in my bathroom, open the window, "Hey, neighbor, shake their hand." It's great, but the kids have nowhere to go, and there is no green space, there is open space, which means nothing. Actually, what definitions? That's five?
Just wrap up, wrap up, wrap up.
Yeah. Michelle is giving me a five minutes.
Unless this council says you may, just wrap up.
Okay, so, we need to be smart about what we're doing. Development's gonna happen, because it's money, and our friend here's gonna be happy I said that, because, you know, that can his job to build development in here, but that need to be smart, so everybody can enjoy it, not just to cram more and more people with no reason. That's all. I will come back later.
Thank you, Mr. Jervance. Mr. Fenton, do you wanna speak as well?
Yes, James Fenton, Economic Development for the City of, of Gallatin, and you folks get to make a decision tonight, and, and I will support anything that you decide to do. I just wanted to interject one com, one, one point into this conversation. At this point in time, according to the 2018 TDOT average daily transportation counts at Ryan Avenue that comes out of the development that we've been talking about, onto one-oh-nine, there are twenty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-eighty-five cars a day. And they are, at this point in time, able to get in and out of there, and so, I, I think that's good. I just want to interject into the conversation that within two to three years, one-oh-nine will be completed from seventy in the south, actually forty in the south, clear up to sixty-five, and, and national projections are that that traffic will be close to double at that point in time. And so, given that, at this point in time, they don't want connectivity in between those communities, I'm supportive of that. I, I would encourage you, if, if you follow that, to put emergency gates that will eventually be allowed to become actually through ways, because when that traffic doubles from twenty-nine thousand to fifty or sixty thousand in four or five years, they will most likely appreciate the light that will be coming in for this development. So, I just encourage you to maybe consider that, instead of blocking that off, you allow a, a gate, emergency gate to be put there right now, and then, in the, in, in the future, that could be created, a, a, an actual throughway, so that the folks will be able to use that light, which, when sixty thousand cars a day are traveling down there, most likely they will appreciate. But until then, go ahead and allow them to stay separate, if that's what they wish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Mayor, Council, Randy Caldwell again with Reagan Smith and, and representing MAB America, the developer on here. I'm just here to tell you, we're here in case you have any questions tonight, if, if it becomes appropriate at the end of the public hearing. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Council, is there anyone else wishing to speak under a public hearing? I should ask that. Okay, I will declare a public hearing on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-two closed. And then I do want to be clear, because it seemed like from some of the comments that you didn't realize, it is not being voted on tonight. This was the public hearing night. The second reading will be in two weeks, and so, that's when more discussion will happen, unless this council wants to discuss further this evening. Okay, seeing none. Council, also, with your permission, we had some recognition we wanted to do at the first of the meeting, and we would like to do it at this time, if it's okay with you. And I'll introduce Chief Bandi to do that.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Randy Rogers. It's not every day something like this happens, and we, you know, again, we depend on our citizens and our community a great deal to do our jobs, but on April twentieth, two-thousand nineteen, Mr. Johnson was driving his vehicle and struck a curb, ended up running off the road, and his car caught fire. Mr. Johnson has to use a walker to, to ambulate, and so, he was pretty much trapped in the car. Mr. Rogers ran from his apartment, was able to get down to the car and remove him and get him out to safety, obviously putting his own, own safety at risk, and, and we just wanted to say thank you. Like I say, this, this doesn't happen every day. It was brought to my attention by the sergeant on the shift and, and the officers. We're very grateful. I know that the family of Mr. Johnson is very grateful, because they told us that more than likely, he couldn't have got out of there. So, we're just very thankful he was in the right place at the right time, and, and the good Lord does work in great ways. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Okay, back to the agenda. We are on item number four, which is public hearing on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-three. And for that, Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, rezoning a four-point-three-seven-two acre portion of a parcel from the PGC Plan General Commercial District to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, and a point-one-four-three acre portion of a parcel from the residential eight-plan residential development district to the MRO Multiple Residential and Office District, with a preliminary master development plan for Kensington Row, located north of Freedom Church Road and west of Green Leaf Boulevard. This is a public hearing.
Okay, public hearing on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-three is now open. Anyone wishing to speak can come forward at this time. Okay, I see no one, so, public hearing on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-three is closed. We've already handled item number five, and we move now to item number six, which is second reading on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-four. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is appropriate expense and revenue money for the Abbott-Gallatin Haddon Track grant pin number one-one-zero-four-one-point-zero-zero, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Fennell. Any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-four. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number seven is second reading on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-five. Councilman Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, authorizing the Sumrick County Regional Airport Authority to build over a city roadway and right-of-way. I so move.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is second reading on ordnance oh-one-nine-zero-four-dash-twenty-five. All in favor, please say aye. Anyone? Let's try it again, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Hey, it passes unanimously. Item number eight is resolution R-one-nine-zero-two-dash-ten. Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution declaring the Tennessee Gallatin, Tennessee to reimburse itself for certain expenditures relating to public works projects, which proceeds to be exempt bonds or notes to be issued in an appropriate amount of two-point-two million. So, move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is resolution R-one-nine-zero-two-dash-ten. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Abstentions? Does pass unanimously. Item number nine is resolution R-one-nine-zero-five-dash-twenty-four. Councilman Fennell is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution to, to repeal, to remove the municipality from the application of mandatory allowance of the manufacture of alcoholic beverages, beverages or intoxicating drinks, and thereby causing the manufacturer of alcohol beverages or alcoholic drinks or both to be lawful. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is resolution R-one-nine-zero-five-dash-twenty-four. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. That concludes the regular agenda, bringing us now to other businesses. Is there any member of this council that has an item of other business to bring forward?
I got one, Mayor.
Councilman Overton is recognized.
I've got several calls this week, Nick Tuttle, if you'll just assure everybody that we are gonna pave that street in front of the new fire hall. Please, tell everybody we are.
There are actually, there's actually several roads that have been milled and are, are way, are, are we finished with all the milling, folks? No, we're still milling.
We had holes dug in that one and everything else, so just assure everybody we're gonna pave it. Thank you.
We've got lots of milling happening, then we're gonna have lots of paving happening, and then hopefully, we'll have a lot of happier people. Anyone else with anything? Okay, I have one item sitting over here on this last desk, is an example of what we're looking at for the move to electronic agendas. That means we would have a monitor of that size on every desk up here. We think we can put them at the side, so that everybody can still be able to see the public, and the public can still be able to see up here, and we think we can still get camera shots pretty good.
Can we not get a flat monitor to lay on our desk, like iPad or something to lay on the desk? I mean, that's what we talked about years ago, and...
Well, the problem...
It's so much easier.
Well, Ms. Molly, I'll ask her, 'cause I mean, we could play with several things up here. The size is part of the problem.
Right, so, this, the, whatever solution we put up here is gonna be used for the planning commission as well. And so, they'll be looking at the plan, the bigger plans, and the, you probably can have seen the monitors behind you. This is about the same size as the monitors they use now at the planning commission, so if we go to something smaller like an iPad, and you're trying to look at a map or a, you know, the plans or whatever, it would be really hard to see. So, this is an actual all-in-one computer. So, if we went with a monitor that was flat on your desk, first of all, it'll take up space on your desk, and I know you may wanna be writing or taking notes or whatever. It has a touchscreen, so you can, you know, zoom in, zoom out, can even make it where it's, you have a pen to write on it if you so choose. It'll be, it's a computer, it's not a monitor, meaning the planning commission is a monitor that hooks to a computer, and everybody sees the same thing all the time. These are actual computers, so you would log in, you could check your email before meetings if you wanted to, and you would be connected to the city network, you would have access to the agenda items and the packet and everything that's in, in there. So, this is a little more versatile and, and will work better for planning and council, but obviously, we're open to...
And I'm, I'm, I'm okay with them, but I just know, and I can show you what I'm talking about, but there are large desktops that are flat, that lays on the desk, that you can get to do the same thing that one's doing.
Right, and we were trying to keep it kinda up and away from you.
Where you could have, still have room for...
Yeah, writing or desk and papers.
And then, too, you might wanna consider maybe an offset in the desk, you know, like embedded down in the desk.
Right, there are, there are, we would have to get new desks, or, or ask London to come up with something.
Just change that to top.
Sure.
But these are gonna be a long time, I mean, this is gonna be something for, you know, a long time to come, so let's do it right when we're doing it, but I, I just, and I, I'm not against them, okay? I'm telling you, I want them, I think, we don't need all this paperwork, okay? But, but whatever we do, let's do it right, right now, but if you got those in front of you, you know, can we see the TV cameras, can we see each other, and that kinda stuff? And I, I just think if you got something flat on your desk, that can accomplish the same thing, we need to look at it and see if there is something we can do that with.
Would you, would you all be comfortable not having notebooks with you?
Yes, ma'am. I would be, I, I can't stand myself.
I would be.
You know what I'm for, but I wanna point out, I'm here planning, and I know the necessity of it, but the one thing you gotta think, when, when I come in for planning, I've got this monitor right here, I can just see everybody's top of their heads.
That's what I was thinking, when I could see you are next to that right now.
So, I, I think if we don't have these books, our desk is plenty big to put a fairly good-sized monitor on our desk.
I just drop the desk down like at a level, you know? Don't worry about the monitor, work with the furniture. That's just another option.
Sure, I mean, we're, like I said, we're open to suggestions.
Well, okay, I mean, it makes it a lot easier if you all are all comfortable with going strictly digital, so...
Is that a, what size is that?
That is a twenty-three inch, so...
You take something, we get it before.
And, and we're looking for a stand that will lower that about, I don't know, Councilman Fennell, is it two or three inches that would lower it to the desk, so it would be down a little bit more. The other thing to consider is if we do have the monitor on the desk, that the keyboard, you know, having the ability to have the keyboard, so we would, you know, we're kinda limited with the mic, but we, we need to make sure we have the room for the keyboard, because, you know, doing this on a touchscreen to log in and check can be a little difficult, so...
We would have, we would have a mouse, though, right?
Mm-hmm, yes, there'd be a wireless mouse and a wireless keyboard.
I'm all for digital, I just like to make it where we can still see each other, communicate with each other.
Yeah, I agree, I mean, it's...
And have that, too, so, and I know there's a lot of options out there, okay? There's lots of options out there.
Don't they have the stand?
Well, we were gonna do the corners, we were gonna, we're not gonna put a mic in front of people.
No, we... No, it fits. No, it fits. We've tried it, and it actually fits in there in the corner. It would be, right, I think it's about two inches right now off the desk. We ordered a new stand that would lower it, but it didn't come in in time.
We'll look, if you guys are cool with something flat, we'll look on that, so. You'll lose your drawers.
That didn't sound good, did it? I heard somebody comment on that. Glad I can make you laugh. Okay, so we'll come back with some more options. Yep. Thank you.
When I was on, well, on the JPA, when we visited Mersboro, looked at their chamber, their council meetings and stuff, they had some desks that, like that was cut out, and the screen was laid down into it.
Right.
And they cut their desk and they boxed it in and set the screen down in it where it wasn't raised up high.
There you go, there you go.
Okay. That's all I have on other business. Anyone else? Okay, and now we will move to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. The time of the meeting where you can speak to anything that was not on this evening's agenda. You can come forward at this time and do that.
He's already used your five minutes, didn't he?
Yeah, he probably did, but I'll be real fast. So, just about what you all were just talking about, oh, Michelle Juvance, 1335 Long Holo Pike. If you're gonna be doing new desks and computers and stuff, I was just actually talking before the meeting with Stan, and I was saying, you know what? Like, it feels very like us against them because of the way that you guys sit up here. And I don't like it because you are us, like you are our representatives. And I think if there was a way, if you're gonna actually be chopping up your desks and doing stuff, like, think about that, where if you could be kind of, I don't know, it's just the way that you're up on the stage, and it's like a big kind of shield up here, and it just feels like us against you guys. And it's not supposed to feel like that. It's supposed to be like, you guys are us. And if there's a way to actually physically make the desks feel more like that, then I think that your constituents would maybe be more comfortable to come up and talk about things and whatever. I don't know, that was just something. Thank you.
I'm Leanna Thomas. Don't have to tell you my address. Okay. 902 Wallace Road in Gallatin. I had a general question. I'm not sure if this is where I would do that. I wanted to know if anyone could tell me, I had talked to Bill McCord, and he told me that the Meadows Development Proposal was on the schedule, I think, for maybe May the 14th. But the agenda doesn't come out until, I think, on Friday for Monday or Tuesday. And so, I wanted to know where that was, if it was in a committee or where that possibly was.
This council doesn't have committees. I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
I think it's gonna go back to planning for a new submit, a white bill.
I'm just trying to make sure that we all know where it is and that we don't miss it.
Let Mr. McCord speak.
The applicant and the representative of the applicant had requested deferral until the May 14th meeting. They have since hired a new consultant who is now taking over the project. And the consultant just provided us a letter today asking for additional deferral. However, what we will do is to present that letter and give you each a copy of that letter on the 14th, asking for deferral. I don't know how long it's going to be, but it will eventually, what they're asking for, as she was correct, it would go back to the planning commission. So, that's what the applicant wants, to redesign the whole project to begin with and go back for reconsideration by the planning commission.
So, on the 14th, they'll be asking for a deferral?
Yeah.
There's your answer.
That's it.
They'll be asking for a deferral, in which case it would have to go back to planning.
But it would come to you all.
It would, it would, they would be asking us for the deferral.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm guessing we would probably grant that, I don't know. I don't know. Okay, y'all, we're still in the meeting. What's that part?
Don't you like things we give to you, Jim? In my travels around this famous city, I found-
Hey, hey, hey. Y'all, attention please. Introduce yourself.
I'm sorry. Joe DeBoer at 10007 Hart Street, Gallatin, Tennessee, 370662520. In my travels around our city, I ran across this thing, it's supposed to be a special deal from the, says TDOT, okay? Keep Tennessee Beautiful. And I made sure that I confiscated enough for everybody at the, up here at the front.
Did you acquire them legally? Ms. Hall McCully says we can't accept you.
I'm gonna tell you something, it had been legally or the chief would've got me by now. So, anyway, I have a copy of this for everybody, since you all have to haul stuff around in a bag, Jimmy, complaining about all your paperwork, now you got something to put it in. And to clean up the place, all right? We gotta, we gotta be in there.
Very thoughtful of you.
Clean it up. That's first issue. That's right, think about, even though when I get around in town and do stuff like that. Yep. Now, I got a little, little doings the other day that might be interesting to you there, Mayor. It says, Sumner County Assessment Change Noted. Everybody loves to hear this. And they say the appraised value of my property up on the Ford Place named 10007 Hart Street is $183,800. That's wonderful. But here's the good part. The good part before was it was only assessed for $133,000. $133,400. It looks to me like somebody jumped it up about $50,000. I don't complain about that, not really. Except, I do complain about something else, though, Mayor, and you know what that is? I'll give you two guesses, and the first two don't count. First guess, and the first two don't count. No sidewalks and the streets not wide enough for the community are unsafe. So, now, that's the story. Ain't, ain't big enough.
Now, let's plow those houses down and put some sidewalks and streets in there.
That's right, and I'll follow up on another thing, too. We had a little deal here a few, few years back. I talked to the number one man back here, Mr. Tuttle from Portland. And the famous Duncan Street was paved within the last five years. I noticed that. Nice, pretty pavement. But for the traffic you're talking about putting on that sucker, you wasted your money because it's not wide enough.
Hey, Mr. DeBoer, that was not on the agenda.
I'm just telling you. Because when you get all that traffic on there, and it's not wide enough, it's gonna have problems. The fire truck couldn't even pass two fire trucks on that street. So, anyway, that's what you got to deal with, our mayor, and we had to keep fussing with you, so we gotta keep something going. And by the way, 109, that's a joke. Because by the time that thing's finished, it's gonna be obsolete. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items?
Pascal Juvance, 1335 Long Holo Pike. Just to be quick, I think we should look at the ordinance, at some of the ordinance, and try to apply them. And I'm pretty sure that will make everybody's life better, not try to go around the ordinance to please the developers. I know, again, it's a matter of money, we want them to come in. And, you know, I know the tactic of these people because they apply it with us, and that you're gonna take it, you have no choice, or we're not gonna play ball. I just, you know, 0103120, to prevent overcrowding of land and undue concentration of structures so far as is possible and appropriate in each district by regulating the use and bulk of buildings in relation to the land surrounding them. Can go like that with all, 0103010, 0103030, to protect the character and maintain the stability of residential, business, commercial, and manufacturing area within the city, and to promote the orderly and beneficial development of such area. But beneficial development should be beneficial to everybody, not just a developer who's gonna make a lot of money on a land. That should be beneficial for the people, for your people, all right? Like, people who voted for you. Open space, we already talked about that, so I'm gonna stop on that one, but, where is one of the most, yeah, promote and protect the public health, safety, morals, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the people. I don't know how by authorizing high and more high-density development, we develop the welfare of people. I don't think that's right. I don't think people are gonna be happy to live on top of each other, even if all we hear that that's what people want. No, that's what people get because, where is he? He left. Our development guy just told me that the median price houses in Gallatin right now is $320,000 per house. $320,000. Two years ago, you could buy a house for $120,000. People can't afford that. And that's why they buy these places because that's all they can afford. So, it's probably not what people want, it's just what people can afford. And the developers take advantage of that. And you guys' job is to make sure that the people you represent are happy. Start driving around and look, in the, probably last three or four months, we start seeing for sale everywhere. I never seen that before. We arrived there two and a half years ago, there was not a sign for sale in Gallatin. Now, every time, everywhere I turn, I see sign for sale. People are leaving because Gallatin is not what they came to sign on. It's not becoming what they were thinking. And that's, that's kind of sad. That's kind of sad. So, I think we should have a look of the ordinance and try to stick to it so people can be happy and can be actually happy to come here and want to stay and not just come here as a passage because that's all they can afford and go away as soon as they can. That's all, that's.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items? Seeing no one, public recognition on non-agenda-related items is closed. Have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Alexander. Second, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, we are adjourned. Everyone, have a good evening. Thank you for being here, and we'll see you next time. Good night.